Such terrible time.
We'll call this meeting as Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order for November 23rd, 2021. Roll call, Mr. Peter.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Yeah.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the agenda received its proposal or is amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public that's in the boardroom here have anything to say? Or online? Yes, sir. Step up to the microphone, give your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Justin Jensen, 510 College Street, Cedar Falls. I'm a regional district director for Senator Joni Ernst. So I'm just here today just to listen and hear what's going on. Just thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
This week's expenditure totaled $217,281.77, of which the sheriff's department comes with $30,714. Health Department, $14,892. Conservation, $13,267. And finally, the elections was $78,110. Everything looked normal.
Thank you, James. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little. Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update. Grundy Road PCI Peterson Contractors has finished placing rock for the base. They do have a few minor portions of grading to complete along the roadway, which should probably take another week or two weeks yet. But we're pleased that they were able to complete the majority of the work this year. They still have probably 50 working days left. And we will leave the contract open over the winter because there are erosion control pay items that will have to be, erosion control will have to be looked at through the spring and the winter months. And then finally, the mortar graders are getting their wings on in the next week. And the dump trucks have all the sanders and the spreaders and the plows are on the dump trucks. So we are just about ready for winter. Can I answer any questions at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Just wanted a quick update. Our fall activities, our fall fundraisers have all taken place. They were all greatly received by the Cedar Valley. All of our Halloween in the parks went great. Under the Harvest Moon was the 25th, 26th year, something like that. Kind of lost track with COVID last year and didn't get to have it, but it was a huge success. We downsized it a little bit because of COVID. Very safe activity. We wanted to sell 100 tickets. Sold 96. And the evening was wonderful. It raised a lot of money, met our goals. And so we're really thrilled. So on to Christmas and the winter holiday fundraising. It's always something with us. New to Hartman this year. We've got, Hartman will be putting on their woodland wonderland this year. It's going to take place over two weekends. This is really going to be fun, I think. We actually do sell tickets for this because we had to kind of control crowds. And so on December the 4th, that's the first weekend that Hartman will be turned into a winter wonderland with all kinds of activities inside the building, lots of holiday crafts and books and things like that. Also, on December the 4th, we'll have live reindeer there for the participants to take photos with and all those kinds of things. That program, we figured we could handle 300 participants. We sold it out in just a matter of a couple of days. The following weekend, on December the 11th, same activity minus the reindeer. They won't be back for a second appearance. But we do have what we call Santa Fox. He will be there to take pictures with the kids. And we still have some time slots left with that. So two weekends of some really fun activities at Hartman. And that, you know, kudos to our staff for coming up with some new creative ideas. And it's going to be fun for those that want to participate. And then on to the Second Annual Hickory Hills Holiday Light Show. That will start Saturday after Thanksgiving. We had 40 sites for businesses to go ahead and claim and set up displays. Those were free to those businesses, free advertising. All 40 of them are gone and taken. And on top of that, we do have some really great professional work that has been done down there. And so Saturday, we will start. We have expanded our nights. Last year, we ran eight nights. We're going to run 11. This year, to try to chase the traffic out just a little bit. We had tremendous crowds last year. So starting Saturday, we'll run. And then following that, we'll go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every weekend, right up until Christmas Eve. And we will be open Christmas Eve. That will be from 5:00 PM to 10:30 every night. And we, with what we've seen so far, it looks like it's going to be a great show. So with that, any questions? We're going to have a fun winter season.
Thank you, Michael.
That's really great.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I do need to go back and correct it. So I don't, there was a 20, there was a last minute $23 credit on that last motion. So I don't know if you want to do that now or if you want to revisit that at a different time.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and correct that. Who made the motion and a second on that grant?
It was Tom and Chris.
The dollar amount is $217,304.77. It is a $23 credit on there. So it is just a little bit higher.
Sounds good to me.
Tom, did you hear that?
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. We'll move on from there then. Anybody else in the boardroom want to give a report? Anybody online? Yolando? Hearing none. We'll move on to minutes approved for November 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Moving on to other business. This is the motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:05 AM on Tuesday, December 14th in the Boardroom 201 of Blackhawk County Courthouse. Open bids to proposed purchase of steel to be used for the construction of Project L 3021 Lincoln Road Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is a resolution to approve the amended and substituted County Electronic Services System 2080 agreement and to authorize the chair, board chair to sign the same as recommended by Sandy Smith, County Recorder, in accordance with 2021 legislation passed in House Bill 527 and signed by the Governor Reynolds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Sandy, anything you want to add to that?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Mike has taken a look at this. Basically, we have had a 2080 agreement on file since 2005. This is just changing some of the wording. I believe it's taking the recorders association. It's removing them from the authority and putting it back on the Board of Supervisors with the county recorders.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the Health Department collecting an additional $25 fee for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources each time a county will permit fee is paid as required by the State of Iowa and as recommended by Nafisa Ibanez, Public Health Director.
So moved.
We have to go back.
Hold on.
When this one's done.
Oh, okay.
Did we get a second?
No, not yet.
Oh, second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. I skipped over a resolution. This is a resolution that the Blackhawk County collected total of $4,602.40 from Tyler Sohm, 88% of the $5,230.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is a discussion, county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Nafisa, good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Nafisa Ibanez, Blackhawk County Public Health Director. So we are still on the high here in Blackhawk County. We had 130 cases over the weekend. So that's something that we have to continue to really practice our safety measures. And so last week on KWWL, I did talk about holiday gatherings, people ensuring that they get vaccinated, hopefully before gathering, and also practicing just so the frequency of washing their hands and wearing a face mask, especially when there's multiple families and friends gathering indoors. So we are doing a lot of the communications in regards to the holidays and just what to do and what not to do in preparation for enjoyment. So with that said, last week I had given data on the five to 11-year-olds here in Blackhawk County. We have increased by 2%. Last week, we were at 5%. This week, we are at 7%. So that's good. And, you know, we just, we're encouraging people to continue to get vaccinated. There's vaccines available. And now booster shots are available to everybody 18 and older. Any questions for me?
Any questions online? Tom? Chalka?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Anyone else got any discussion on COVID? Hearing none. We'll move on to discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding. James?
Yes, good morning. Kim is pulling up the list for the Health Department. We had, when we were approving all of Phase One projects, we did decide to table the Health Department so we could get a little bit more information. And so here we are today. So if you have any questions, concerns, otherwise I'll let Nafisa kind of come up and maybe reintroduce her items on the list and then go from there.
Good morning. So these were the items presented. Nothing has changed from October, I believe. We talked about the first item, COVID-19 at-home testing translation for Phase One. And that is, what we're estimating for that is very small, is between $700 to $1,500. And the reason for that is because we have no funding to cover the testing. We're getting a lot of funding in regards to vaccinations, but not, but not for at-home testing translations. And so those are some of the things that, you know, is important. I talked about this in October where, you know, we have about 75 languages spoken in Waterloo School District. And translation continues to be something very difficult for us, but we're managing. And so this helps mitigate the impact of COVID-19 through testing and public communication efforts. The contact tracers through the end of pandemic, five of them, the $93,000 is the estimated for salaries that we, that we have for them. And then the fleet management, we introduced that as one of the eligible expenses. And you, as you can see that we had, we indicated that this has replaced all current fleet over the life of the ARPA funding. So not in Phase One, but this is something that is, we can look at to see whether, those are things that you all will consider to be a priority. Program equipment replacement needs. So we have, our, these are very at the programmatic level. And these can be in Phase One. These are dental equipment replacement. For example, let me just share with you all a little bit more details of some of the dental equipment. The curing lights, you know, when you put sealants and you put the light on for the sealant to be able to hold really well. The last time it was purchased was back in 2016. And so we've had to replace, we've had to fix them. So we haven't replaced them. We've, we've just been fixing them when they get damaged. But those, that, the estimates for that run between $1,000 to $2,000 each. And we need to. The pill store for tuberculosis, TB, that's about $1,000. And then the lead, XRF, that's, we're estimating that to be $14,000. Right now, we have borrowed the one from Waterloo City. And that's what we use for our head and clip, clip grant. So that's what you're seeing. And we can share the details of those numbers, but they're all really rough estimates that we're providing. The office chairs and sit to stand for all employees, it can be either in Phase One or Two. Again, these are things that were deemed as eligible expenses. We had estimated about $20,000 for the chairs and sit to stand, $5,000. Health communication, equipment and department uniforms. The department uniforms, you know, it stems also from our environmental health team. They're going out in rural communities. And so it's very important that we're identified as, you know, at least, you know, as government entities so that there's clarity on who's on the property and for what reason. But health equipment, communication, those are items that we're struggling for. We needed video camera for emergency preparedness. Press conference, you know, we've been using our phones, you know, and that's been a challenge. And so the video editing, also software and tripod for camera. So I want to, those things, yesterday, we received about $393,000 from the state to the Board of Health. And that is for technology. So that is news that I haven't even shared yet with the state. But I was talking to Bridget earlier this morning to see if, we need to follow up with the state to see if the items that we were requesting here may be something that we can use with this funding. But the state did give us that amount of money. And it's for public health to upgrade all IT-related things, you know. For example, they said that all local public health agency using this funding to upgrade operating systems to Windows 10 or newer. So we're going to need a lot of IT improvement as well that will be tied to just this funding that we received yesterday. And then the mobile clinic, I, you know, talked about that in our ARP meeting. This is definitely a high priority, but in, it's not in Phase One. It could be in Phase Three because we need more time to do some, some research in regards to the cost, the layout. And we're looking at a combination of health and dental for that. And for us to be able to do some IT, some STD testing as well. And this is really to remove the barriers, you know, of access, you know. One of the things when we were doing the vaccine, vaccination efforts, we, we're very fortunate in collaboration with Unity Point. We like rented a van. But the message that people were conveying was that, you know, thank you for being in our communities, you know. So that's something that, you know, just helps with some of the transportation, vulnerable population, like the homeless population, if we need to go and do some of the vaccination and, you know, individuals that cannot leave their homes. And so I think that's something for you all to consider. But we are, you know, it's, we do need to research. And it's, you know, that's, that's, that's important too. So these were the items that we, we had requested. Any questions?
Have you or James had an opportunity to put a total to the items that you think were immediate and in Phase One? And what should be, what you'd like to see funded, I guess, or what you're asking from us?
We can do that. I think this.
Well, I just, I know you mentioned like the first item, you know, was like $700 to $1,500 for the home testing translators. That type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
The contact tracers, now you mentioned those would only be used through March of '22.
We're hoping, I mean, with the pandemic, like that's one of the conversations. So I think, and, and I think that there's funding there that they, they know if we need it. I mean, we're, we just don't know. Yeah. So these are all, this is what we're estimate, we're hoping that everybody will be eligible for vaccination by then, but.
Nafisa, I have a question.
Yes.
With the mobile unit, have you taken into consideration the annual operating cost?
Yes. I, so we have, I mean, so like with our fleet, there's, so the operate, it would be personnel that would, like our current personnel. So there's no additional personnel. I think the, the thing that we would take into consideration is fuel and what, you know, repairs would look like. And those are things we can research and get, you know, estimates or numbers of what that has been with other departments. I don't, I don't mind doing that. That's research. But this is something that would be operated by our current staff. So just like the other, the cars that we have, it would, it would just be operated by our staff.
So maintenance, I don't know.
Maintenance.
Is that your question, Dan, as far as maintenance, like the gas and oil and?
Yeah.
That type of thing or?
Oh, yes. I just want to make sure it's been considered.
Yes.
Nafisa?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
It sounds like we got a mixed bag of Phase One, Two and Three.
Yes.
Are you prepared today to tell the board what Phase One is? Or would you need a week to come back and specifically list Phase One product, projects so the board can see it? To know what we're voting on? Because I'm kind of confused this week to kind of sit here and try to sort this out. So can we delay this till next week and you come back and say, okay, here's my Phase One I'd like you to consider for approval? Is that possible?
Yes. We can, we can definitely do that.
I know it's estimates, but I think as close as we can get to it and also broken out. I know you talked about several things as far as in the equipment and the dental equipment needs, but itemized for us.
Uh-huh.
So see, we see what those are.
Yeah, we can.
With your mobile clinic, you're going to need a special driver. Just a regular person can't drive that, I don't believe.
So we did research that. And Bridget, I don't believe for the mobile, you need a CDL. I think that's what you're asking. But we did do some research on that. Bridget, can you confirm if that's?
I have a real concern supporting that, seeing the list of cars and the way they've been taken care of. I don't know. I've, I've got the list in my office. I think it figures out to about 63,000 miles on our cars. And most of them are rusted out. Shame on somebody. There's no way them cars should be like that.
I think generally looking at the list, it looks like the Phase One stuff we're looking at is the at-home testing translation, the contact tracers, the program equipment, the office chairs and sit to stands, and the uniform and communication equipment. That's where we're looking for the more immediate decision, right?
And then for the communication, I can definitely, I mean, those are things, I needed to tell you all that this came through. You know.
By then you'll know too if some of that applies or you'd like to utilize that too.
Yeah.
I have a question for James.
Okay.
Yeah.
When it comes to the fleet, let's say we sell these cars, we purchase cars using this funding. We sell several within six, seven, eight years. Is that revenue that will be realized for us or are there strings attached through this federal funding that we have to share this revenue?
No. So what, what will happen is, I mean, and I could be wrong. It's, it's going to be up to this board. But, you know, when we, when we get these vehicles, we would trade these vehicles in as well. We would, we would choose a priority list. And as we purchase a vehicle, we would trade it in. And so I, I do not necessarily see us just outright selling vehicles or necessarily purchasing vehicles as, on top of the 19 vehicles that we have. Does that make sense?
Yes. So there's no strings attached to the beds?
Correct.
No.
Your positive.
And Tom's mentioned it previously when we have had vehicles that went from one department to another. I think we've tried to be cautious with that going forward, that they were actually not needed. And those fleets are not usable. And so then if they were, we found other uses in the county perhaps before. We would do something like that, like trade them in.
Well, what I might want to add is, I don't know, three, four years ago, maybe longer, the Health Department was getting rid of two or three vehicles. I worked with the assessor's office for those to obtain those vehicles. And they're still using them to my knowledge today. So they did have quite a bit of life left in them. I believe they only had 90,000 miles on them when the assessor's office got them. So for me, that fleet list there and what I saw here last week or the week before, we had the breakdown. There's quite a few cars in there with the miles on there that I would not consider replacing at this time. That's just being fiscally responsible because I know earlier Dan had mentioned that even though this money's here, we still got to be responsible for it. And I think your taxpayer out there will look at that and say, I'm driving cars that have twice that miles and you guys are replacing them. So I think we need to take a little closer look at that fleet schedule that I saw and trim that list down. Because I think we get more use out of those vehicles.
Sure. I think all of us would be willing to look at that in more detail. But I was going to say in fairness to, I think, the previous director and staff at the Health Department, I think they assumed that there was a rotation and they needed to keep rotating the vehicles out. And we were checking then further to find out what the mileage was. And when we saw the mileage, that, you know, it wasn't just a rotation for the sake of rotation, only when the vehicles needed or warranted it or had no longer become dependable, things like that. Or like I say, there were issues with them. But so that's, I think, been cleared up. I don't know if you're utilizing any type of rotation or now, or that's why you considered this perhaps. I'm thinking.
They have been buying cars over the last few years.
Oh, yeah, they have, yes. But when you look at the mileage, I mean, as far as replacing a fleet, I think we thought there were several that had mileage in here that really just weren't ready to be traded out yet.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's something.
I think, Linda, I think what, what we need to do, the Health Department can put that together. But I think the Board of Supervisors, seeing that the final decision comes to them, we need to probably come up with some criteria on there because it seems like we're all over the place. I mean, you know, we should be replacing cars because they have 90,000 miles on them. There should be a criteria, why are we replacing this car? And once you replace that car, you're not getting nothing out of $500 at best. Or maybe another department can use it. So we need to come up with some criteria that we can follow so we can be responsible when we are rotating these vehicles. Sheriff's car is a little different because they're on the road 24/7. But situations like this with the Health Department, we need to come up with some kind of a process.
Yeah. And I think we've been doing that, but just kind of individually every year, not necessarily setting out a process to do it. So we look and ask the mileage and about the condition of the cars. So we've been doing some of that, Tom. But you're right, to have a process in place makes it more clear for everyone. And I think you put this item maybe in here because it qualified. Did you not, Nafisa?
Yes, yes.
Not necessarily because you wanted to replace the whole fleet, but that you thought this was something that qualified for?
For the, for, yes.
So, okay. That's great. Because I think when we first heard about it or read about it, we first thought, or at least I know, it was like to replace the whole fleet in the six years and start doing that.
Like Tom said, that's not being fiscally responsible.
Well, we wouldn't want to do that, I think, anyway.
Well, I think.
Now we're averaging 60-some thousand miles.
And you were, you got to 60-some thousand miles. That's very irresponsible.
I think you were looking at that was going to be done in phases over the lifetime of this.
Yes.
Six years.
An all-at-once thing. So, I mean, I, I personally drive a car with over 200,000 miles on, so I, I know I try to get as much out of a car as I can. So it's, we've kind of come up, as Tom was saying, with the formula that balances what miles are, but what the current and ongoing maintenance costs are, and that's, that's how you make the calculation.
So we're fine.
With that said, my car didn't start last week when I was.
Yeah, that's right.
That has to do with maintaining.
To be traded at 190,000.
That's right.
Well, you are all right then, removing some of this item even out of the phase one.
Absolutely. I mean, absolutely. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I included the phases for you all to see. And so per Tom's request, I can, we can go back and put things in, in the different categories, so that you all have that. And I, we can, that's something we can probably email in the next couple hours also to, to, to you all. So most of the, the items in, in phase one really are going to be at the programmatic level, so to support day-to-day operations. And so that's the, that's the key takeaway. The big item, items like the, the fleet and the mobile clinic, those are definitely things that we can do it in phases. And I just want to, for my own clarity, the criteria states that, that will be set for the fleet management will come from the board of supervisors.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed, Nafisa, say you're going to kind of put your list together for the phase one for next week that we can approve. I'm not opposed if you have some cars in there from that fleet. If you feel that there's some that are ready for this time, the board can make a decision to approve it or not approve it. But that way, phase two, there may be some more in there. Phase three, there may be some more in there. That way, we're kind of spacing it out.
Okay.
I think, I think the objection was a couple of things. The whole fleet at one time, and also some vehicles that probably don't really need to be replaced at this time.
Okay.
But I think if you put together the phase one projects, and like you said, a lot of them are program, programs.
Yes.
And so forth, I think we can implement them, approve them right away and move on next week.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I did have a question for you, Nafisa, when you had in there like trailer hitches and those types of things. Were those something that you needed right away, or those are just something to be replaced?
Which ones?
You mentioned trailer hitches, I believe, to the ability to pull trailers.
Yes, yes. So those are, yeah, those are things we can include in phase one, because that's, that's been a burden for, for us operationally, but, yeah.
Okay. Well, I just meant anything that you felt was really an immediate need that we should be addressing is, is to me what should be in phase one.
Okay. Yep. We can do that.
And then we, what, agree to look at them item by item next week? Does that sound fine? Get them approved? Is that?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nafisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, James?
James, I was just going to say, I thought I had a question. As far as the ARP money and, and what have we received to date? Those are just my questions. I don't know if anybody else has got some, but I'm just curious. I think you've told us before.
What have we received to date?
To date.
Half of the allocation already. So we, so we received on July 1st, I believe, it was the 25, just half, half of the 25 and a half. And then on July 1st of 2022, we'll receive the second half. So it's one, exactly one calendar year after our first allocation.
And you said, like, I think before, this is all in an interest-bearing account? We've cut it all?
Correct. Not, not much, but, yeah.
Not much interest?
Not much interest, but yes.
Much out there.
I know that we were looking at establishing just the process for nonprofits to approach us with proposals. Are we ready to take action on that today so that we can get that out to folks? Both, this is me, I see it both in kind of lockstep with also just our regular budget process, too.
I, I'll go ahead and answer that one. We're still working on it, is the, is the short answer. The board needs to be a little clearer, I think, at this point as to when we want to move forward on this. I heard several different things when this was brought up last week. One, one idea was we wait until budget time, but then I think there was another sentiment that with respect to prior allocations, that we had to pull, for lack of a better word, we wanted to visit that a little bit sooner. And, and we're kind of looking at perhaps either yet this year, or perhaps shortly after New Year's. So I certainly have those recommendations before next week.
Okay.
That's something we will, well, holiday week, we, we should be able to have them before next week's meeting.
Okay.
Or the week after.
That works.
Make sure I'm clear on what you mean. For the nonprofits, not that we discussed last week that we're in, would be reconsidered or whatever for going forward in the contracts. You're not meaning that.
I mean, yeah, no, I mean, mostly just the process for which we can solicit proposals and accept proposals.
All right.
You think in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that should, that should be, and, and it should be fairly straightforward, I would think.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can visit them and get back.
Are you talking about a process for, for the budget then?
Yeah, I think it, to me, I see it very similar for the budget and the American Rescue Plan money. And we can determine on whether a specific proposal fits into one area better or not. But it should be, the process would be the same for accepting them.
Yeah. I, to be honest with you, what I was, is, is any, if we're going to have any talks on any, it'll be during the budget process.
Yep.
Nothing prior.
Mr. Trynen, I guess I've got a question for you then. As far as the items that we discussed last week with the nonprofits and regarding the nonprofits, we said there was more research we wanted to do before we.
So here's where.
Discussion on them.
Here's where I'm starting to come down on that. It's very, very important that we don't show favoritism between these different organizations, and for that matter, between nonprofits and for-profits. That's what the law demands of us in this situation. As a result of that, I think that whatever we come back with, it's going to be pretty clear that we need to identify the service that the organization is providing for us. We need to give multiple organizations the opportunity to offer, provide those services, and it can't be limited to nonprofits. That's the way that I read the requirement. I realize that a number of counties have, have gone and provided these, you know, they've entered into contracts with these different nonprofits to provide certain services, and these are beneficial services. These are services that, that provide, they, they go to a public purpose. However, I think that it's, it's this part about not showing favoritism that becomes hard to wrap your mind around, because the question becomes then, well, what are the services we're paying for? How do we, how do we make this offer something that multiple people can, can perhaps avail themselves of, or compete for even? And so that's what we're looking at right now. It makes it difficult to simply give a grant, so to speak, or even a payment for services to a nonprofit who simply asks for it. We've got to identify that public purpose, and we cannot show favoritism in the process.
Okay. Where I see difficulty is, and we're allowing them, or we thought that was probably encouraging them to submit something, what those services are, and then we have to make the decision, I guess, if they're competing with someone else or not.
I think that's what it does. I think what we have to do is come up with something that says, well, if we want to give, we want to pay a certain amount towards, say, rental assistance or public housing, or perhaps victim assistance, or perhaps legal assistance for, for defending in foreclosures or evictions, or things like that. You know, there are different organizations that we funded in the past that provide these various public services. Obviously, you know, food is a big one. And these, these fit under various public purpose umbrellas. But having said that, the part that troubles me, the part that's difficult, is that we need to, we need to allow any organization to have an equal shot at that. So we can't simply, in my opinion, respond to an ask from organization, Organization X who comes in and says, well, we want to, you know, we ask that you give us this much funding, which we can use to do A, B, and C projects. We first have to decide that we want to do those projects, and then have to decide which organization should do them for us. That's the way I see it.
So if we, both as a board ourselves and staff, but then also soliciting ideas from nonprofits of just the, the general areas of which they would like to see the county providing support for those services, and then publish that we're soliciting proposals for all these different areas that both nonprofits, and there are a handful of for-profit social service agencies in the community too, can then, then give us their proposals? Is that, you know, the more fair way you want it, or more clear-cut way to approach it?
That is exactly where I see this coming down, Mr. Schwartz. I think that it makes the most sense to, to go out, instead of simply soliciting an ask, rather soliciting a provide, so that we can, you know, that we can then fund that organization to provide those services.
Okay.
Okay.
And so first, what this board's got to decide, in my opinion, is what services do we want to provide? Then we go about, we go about holding ourselves out as, as asking for proposals to provide, or to, for an organization to provide those services.
Well, I see what we did previously this year for the budget a little bit different than going forward.
Yes.
Just because they're really, I think, we're just the three, for the most part, that even qualified, and that we'd be, you know, that we were looking at seeing what we could do for those in their budgets, but.
Now, and that was the part I was hung up on still, was what do we do to fund the, fund the organizations that we had in the past? And I want to reach out to the auditor to see, the state auditor, to see what their opinion on that is. We already, you know, initially, when this letter came out, the, the directive from it was we were supposed to be reimbursed. And, but then they also made that allowance for providing services that serve a public purpose. Well, we, we went ahead and worked with the auditor to, to eliminate any suggestion or requirement that we have to seek reimbursement. Now the question is, look, we need these services. This was how we had arranged to do it last year, can we, or earlier this year, can we still move forward with that because they are providing these services?
Well, I think the board was fairly unanimous, I thought, in what we wanted for services and that saw it as that, them providing services, not us just giving them donations. So to me, that is kind of what we need to do.
All right. So, so the way I see this then is we've got two, two objectives here. Number one, we wanted to determine whether we can move back to providing, to funding those organizations that we funded, or we had agreed to fund during the budget session early this year. And number two, we want to develop a procedure by which we will provide for organization funding and services moving forward in this coming budget session. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. I see it that way. Do you?
Yep.
And I think the first priority of them is to, is to figure out the funding for the, for the ones that we had previously agreed to fund.
Tom?
My thought on the one, though, is, the one board I sit on, I'm not going to mention what, that they were going to use the money toward parking lot. And I understand, you know, that's not allowable. So they went out and raised other money, but now there's some shortfalls in other areas. Plus, I sit on some boards that use money for giving raises. That is, I vote no against every one of them, not, not just for the straight raise, but for bonuses, more or less, is what these are. They had one last night at the board I sat on. They gave out bonuses. I think that's ludicrous in this time right now to be doing that, when, like I said before, we got people out on the street hurting bad, and we're doing stuff like that with organizations. And who's to say that we give money to an organization and it's 50,000 or $150,000 to do, you know, do great things for, and 50,000 of it goes for wages?
And I, I think those are.
How do we watch that, Mike?
That's when you go back to what I said earlier, is any money that Blackhawk County gets should be for services only. Services only.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kathy?
Yes, please. Sorry, you didn't know that last time.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm, I'm listening. So I'm Gwen Brownard Hecker. I'm the Iowa Program Director for Riverview Center. And I'm one of the, we are one of the organizations that were approved for funding for this fiscal year. I believe it was $5,000, which we greatly appreciate it. And to your question, I was here last week as well, and I think it's a wonderful question. I think it's an important concern is, how do you track to make sure that the funds that we are given through, you know, the board here or any county board or whatever, are used for what they're supposed to be used for? And I can speak for my own, I can also speak, I believe, for our prader at the food bank and whatnot. She and I have had lots of conversations about this. The level of tracking that we have to provide for any funding we receive from anywhere is quite sophisticated. We use a database system that connects directly to our QuickBooks. The database system was actually created by the Attorney General's Office specifically for our work. And so when we account for the services that we provide, we account for them in 15-minute increments from each staff member, working with a particular client who is code, color, number code, excuse me, number coded per county. So at any point in time, you could ask, you could ask me right now, I could go back to my office, and in 10 minutes, I could have the exact number of hours that were spent on Blackhawk County services to Blackhawk County clients, and how much then that attributed to transportation, if we transported a client to the food bank to get food, for example, or if we transported a child who'd been sexually abused to therapy. We could account for those in 15-minute increments. So it's, we could account very much they don't go for salaries. The one example I always give is last Halloween, we did a community trunk-or-treat for children in areas that aren't deemed safe by their parents to trick-or-treat, and we did a trunk-or-treat. And I went and I spent $2.71 on streamers to decorate my car to do that. That $2.71 came out of our fundraising money. That wouldn't be allocated to anywhere, any funding we would receive other than fundraising. But I still have to provide that receipt for $2.71 with the QuickBook entry, that it came out of fundraising to the Attorney General's Office. So we, we track our funds very closely, and I, I believe Supervise is right, we would be able to manage to a level of accountability that you would expect. So it doesn't go to bonuses, it doesn't go to salaries, those kind of things.
And I think many nonprofits are going to be in that category, that they either have independent audits required.
Every year, annually, yeah.
Um, so if they're receiving federal or state funding. So that's, those are all questions that we can put on this application, like, when was your last independent audit? We can ask for the names of their board members and determine the strength of their board, because certainly there's some boards that are just, you know, rubber stamping, they're not doing their homework and looking at, at things. But some boards are strong and are looking at things. And so we can kind of make that determination of how much oversight there really is within, within an organization. And we can have a couple of questions about both independent audits. Do you have electronic tracking software that you're using? I think to try and weed out some of those concerns.
Yeah. So, thank you.
I do have a question, I do have a question for you real quick. You indicated that you applied for the $5,000.
Yes.
Through the county, and the information, did you, that information you just told the board?
Yes.
Did you provide that information to the board when you applied for the funding?
We would have, I, I'd have to go back and review it, because I was here that when we, when we made the presentations on those, or I think we did them virtually this year. But we do provide the number of hours of services that we provide directly to Blackhawk County clients, because we serve 14 counties. And so we have to be very specific and very careful in how we track to ensure that the right funding is used. So, so I don't know, Tom, I can actually, I can actually look to see. And, and we could, I can, you know, again, if you needed it tomorrow, I could provide you all of that information tomorrow.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think, to be honest with you, we've, I know in the past, have awarded money just by discussion on the board, and we didn't have any of this information.
Correct.
And I'm crucial in the future that we do, so we're assured that it's for services only if we decide to give to any agency. So what you just said would have been beneficial, making a request to the board for any kind of funding.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, to be honest with you, we provide for the information that we are asked. So I think what you're talking about is breaking them down into, you know, social services, human services, what, you know, breaking those down and then asking for proposals for provision of those services would be great. And then also asking about the tracking, you know, and I, I agree. We, we do provide that information often to wherever we, wherever we, you know, apply for funding. So I, 100% agree that that's a, a great, great information to provide.
Sounds like something.
Yeah, thank you.
From a contract standpoint, it'd be, yeah. Sounds like something from a contract standpoint, it'd be very easy and helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one more question for Mike. Mike, on the opposite side of what we've been talking about, for the last fifteen years, we've had a, Community Services has had a contract with three agencies. Does, is that still on concrete ground? I mean, we're talking about this given to nonprofits, but we've had a contract for fifteen years with three agencies. Do we need to redo that or take a look at that? Because prior to that, that funding was, was put out through our county community services. And then fifteen years ago, we decided to contract out with it. So are we, are we all right doing that right now or do we have to take a look at that process also?
I think we're actually in really good shape on that one, Mr. Little, because in that instance, we actually amended it to create written contracts specifically for the purpose of compliance with the directive from the state auditor. Because of that, now, it isn't to say that you couldn't, you know, you can't show favoritism in deciding which organization's going to provide those services. But my understanding was we didn't have a lot of organizations that we knew of who could provide those services. And we went with three different ones in order to do that.
Because the county was actually performing them themselves. And then when we got a new director for Community Services, they decided to outsource it. And that happened about fifteen years ago, so.
I did understand that. And the only thing I believe that changed this past year was the fact that we, I don't know that they had entered into those contracts with those organizations in prior years. But now we did prepare and approve three or, you know, one contract for each of those organizations.
Right, right. And we approved them on an annual basis.
Yeah, that's the way it would be now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Phase Two or process or timeline or what are next steps from where we go from here, James?
Yeah, so Phase Two will obviously be during the budget season. So we'll just kind of incorporate that in the work sessions. For the ARP Subcommittee, we'll meet sometime in December, get that all squared away. There were some items that were in Phase One that were kind of left off just because we didn't have, you know, an estimated dollar amount or, you know, just various reasons. So we'll try to incorporate that in Phase Two. But, yeah, so we'll, we're just kind of going to meet again in December and then we'll, we'll have work sessions in Phase Two for it, so.
And I think Rory sent out an email that you and he were going to make a report or an update next week. Does that sound right on the space assessment?
Yeah, so Invision will actually be here to go over their schedule and kind of discuss what they plan to go through. And, you know, I believe there's eight work sessions that they plan to bring everybody up to speed on in a public meeting, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any reports or information from the board?
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And safe.
And healthy.
You entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.